Good evening and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners meeting this March 25th, 2025. I'm pleased today that we have Pastor Tim Locke of East Cobb Presbyterian Church. He'll be providing our invocation, which will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Deputy Black. For those of you willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and pledge.
Allow me to pray for us. Heavenly Father, we are delighted in the people who have committed to serving our community, pursuing our flourishing, pursuing the health and the unity of this place we love so much, Cobb County. We ask that you'll give them wisdom. We ask that you will lead them in humility and in holiness. Lord, as a community, would we experience the full goodness that you have provided for us in our Savior Jesus Christ, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Locke and also Deputy Black. Before we get started this evening, I did want to acknowledge some of the networking issues that we're having here in the county. Cobb County's Information Technology Services Department alerted us to anomalies within our network. And as a preventative measure, we have taken certain systems offline for purposes of assessing the security of our digital environment. And we are currently investigating that activity. We are working diligently to investigate the sources of those abnormalities and confirm the impact that it's having on our systems and our data. As the investigation progresses, we will bring our systems back online, but ensure that we do so in a safe and secure manner. We appreciate your patience and your understanding at this time. And if there are any additional questions that you have, we strongly encourage you to reach out to our Communications Department Director Ross Cavett, and he can be reached at 770-528-1000. With that, we'll call our meeting to order. We do have two presentations that are before the board and want to let those of you who are here in our audience and those who are tuning in at home know that the networking issues that we're having are impacting our systems, even in this boardroom, and that we are only able to show PowerPoints but not cameras this evening. So some of the AV may be impacted. With that, we do have two presentations again that are before us. Our first presentation will be brought by Commissioner Burrell, and she will be presenting certificates of achievement to Lassiter High School Speech and Debate Team. For those of you who are here as a part of that presentation, I ask you to please come join the Commissioner down up front.
Well, good evening everyone. We have with us tonight the Lassiter High School Speech and Debate Team. A special recognition for these young students, brilliant students. And also with us tonight is our Principal of Lassiter, Chris Ritchie, and School Board Member David Chastain.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burrell, for allowing us to be here tonight to do this recognition. I know our students have worked extremely hard and all the time they put in, especially on Saturdays. So I can't thank you all enough for being here tonight to be able to part of this recognition. Ms. Burrell, again, thank you very much for doing this for our students.
We also have some special recognition for our coaches here tonight. And because these kids are so brilliant and working hard every day, I'm going to ask Coach Waters to call out the names and Board, School Board Member Chastain and I will hand them out. So, there you go.
All right, thank you so much. Very glad to be here.
First, I'm going to just read the accomplishments. They're all the same, but the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates the Lassiter High School Speech and Debate Team for its outstanding achievement at the Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Championship. By securing the state championship in the speech sweepstakes and finishing as state runner-up overall, you have demonstrated exceptional dedication, perseverance, and excellence. This remarkable accomplishment cements your place among Georgia's best and brings immense pride to Lassiter High School and the Cobb County community. We congratulate you on this well-earned achievement. So the first certificate...
Goes to Haran Anand. Next is Amal Balakrishnan. Priyaska Barua. The next one... The next one could not be here, Veer Bardawaj. The next is Adeline Choi. The next also could not be here, Sally Dawwood and Annabelle Duda. All right, the next one goes to Elizabeth Gavierez. And the next one to Parker Glidewell. And the next one could not be here, Chloe Hua. And the next one is Madison Kang. The next one also cannot be here, Rithvik Law. Sorry. The next one is Samuel Lamorand. And Sophia Martin. And Niharika Ramon. And the last is Emma Rascoe. Zara Scott, Elizabeth Voe, and Leo Yadav could not be here tonight.
So now we have a special award for you.
Coach Kozola. Yeah, I just want to say thanks to the two coaches that have sponsored Speech and Debate. You could not ask for two better people. And you think about, you know, what a teacher does throughout their day. Coach Kozola teaches social studies throughout the day. Coach Waters has English throughout the day. So once their teaching job is finished, then they have to continue the second part of their day, as well as on weekends, to coach Speech and Debate as well. So you could not ask for, you know, two better educators, completely dedicated to kids. And for the time that they give up to see kids be able to get this kind of recognition, you really cannot put a value on that. So, you know, truly from the bottom of my heart, I can't thank you all enough for what you all do for all of the kids at Lassiter. So thank you very much. And a special recognition for Coach Waters as well. Coach Rogers was inducted into the Georgia Speeches Coach Hall of Fame as well. So he's been one of the leaders in Speech and Debate throughout the state for a long period of time. And we're very fortunate to have him at Lassiter so he can share his talents with us. So thank you very much and pleasure to be able to give you these certificates tonight as well.
Okay, Jonathan Waters. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates Jonathan Waters on his outstanding leadership and dedication to Lassiter High School Speech and Debate Team. Under his guidance, Lassiter secured the state championship in the speech sweepstakes and was named state runner-up overall at the Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Championship. His impact was further recognized with two prestigious honors, GFCA Speech Coach of the Year and induction into the GFCA Hall of Fame. His leadership has fostered a culture of excellence, and we commend him for the well-earned achievement.
I'd be happy to. Okay. To Christina Kozola, Lassiter High School Speech and Debate Team Coach, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates Christina Kozola on her outstanding leadership and dedication to the Lassiter High School Speech and Debate Team. Through her guidance, Lassiter secured the state championship in the speech sweepstakes and was named state runner-up overall at the Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Championship. Her commitment to fostering a culture of excellence has been instrumental in the team's success, inspiring students to achieve at the highest level, and we commend her for this well-earned achievement. Congratulations.
So usually we're up here with the schools for a state basketball championship or baseball championship. So tonight, we're recognizing academics and what school's about. So congratulations to all of you. Keep up the good work, keep up the good fight, and we're proud of you. So we need a picture. Roll call. We'll have to double up some. Tall in the back.
Parents, if you'd like to come up and take a picture of your students, please feel free to do so before they leave the front of the room. Yes. Should be.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we will have our second presentation now, brought by Commissioner Gambrell, to present a certificate of recognition. to present a certificate of recognition to Ms. Olivia Lee Evans. Please join us up front, Ms. Olivia.
Pretty girl.
Well, Olivia, it is with great pleasure that I present the certificate of recognition. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners recognizes Olivia Lee Evans for your unwavering dedication to spreading kindness and making a positive impact in our community. Through Lulu's light, you have inspired countless individuals to embrace service and compassion, volunteering with the Special Olympics, serving as the North Georgia Fair Queen, and leading community service initiatives. Encouraging others to let your light shine and be kind, you exemplify the true spirit of leadership and generosity. The Board commends your remarkable contributions and ongoing efforts to create a brighter, kinder world. This the 25th day of March, 2025.
Parents, I know you want to take a picture, but if you'd like to also be in it, you have that opportunity as well. It's her, all right, Ms. Olivia, it's your award. Okay, very good. Congratulations. Okay. That concludes the presentation portion of this meeting, and we are now at our first public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the, some of the related meeting rules. Please state your name and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization. All comments should be made to the Commission as a body and addressed through the Chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. Comments should not be slanderous. The Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard, but treating others with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And there's a timer on the podium to keep track of your three minutes. Mr. Foster, you're first.
Hello, Sam Foster. Uh, I've come up here for the past two months talking about, uh, the need for trying to achieve short-term progress for pedestrian and cyclist safety, motor safety in general, but with a specific highlight on, uh, pedestrian and cyclist safety. And today I want to keep in line with that trend by talking about something that happened 15 years ago. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Plan that Cobb County completed in 2010. Among a list of things that it did, obviously it called for general improvements to our, our roadway infrastructure. But it also had a list of policy recommendations. I'm not sure if any of them have been implemented yet. Maybe they have, I'm, I'm not sure. But, uh, when I was reading through those policy recommendations, a, a couple of them stuck out to me when I was, I was reading through them. I just wanted to come up here, uh, and talk about, uh, the three that stuck out to me the most. Maybe I can breathe some life into them after 15 years, if some of them are not already on the books. So one of them, uh, that it talked about was including, uh, pedestrian and bike improvements when you're resurfacing a road project. So if a road is big enough and you're resurfacing it, you could just add a bike lane because you're already resurfacing it. So that's, uh, one that I thought was pretty cool. Also, uh, providing for pedestrian connectivity between, uh, developments. So when you're building out a new subdivision, we like to restrict the amount of cars that can move through that subdivision. And that's pretty much why we build cul-de-sacs. But we could also just connect, uh, different developments. Whenever a new development is built, we could say that a developer is required to have connections in between developments or directly to an adjacent street. Um, so it'd be easier for people who are biking and walking to get to, uh, things that are close, but when you're in a car, you have to sprawl out of your subdivision and then go onto a busy road. Anyway, um, and then the last one that, uh, stuck out to me the most and something that I care about a lot is bike parking. So, uh, one of the policy recommendations that they made was for bike parking to be required in the, uh, in the zoning code. And the logic goes that we have car parking requirements, so why don't we have bike parking requirements? Especially if, uh, we've stated many times that we want people to bike more. So this would be pretty much just a portion of, uh, it would be, the bike parking requirements would be a portion of the bike part, uh, of the car parking minimums that we currently have on the books. And, uh, it would include, uh, design standards and it would also specify what types of bike parking you have, short-term, uh, and long-term. And with my remaining time, I will say that, uh, everywhere I go, even if it's a government building, I end up having to, uh, chain my bike to a fence, a tree, um, or, uh, try to search for a bike rack in a parking garage. There's, there's no way to find it. So, um, I think that would be, uh, awesome if it was included sometime in the future. Thank you.
The next speaker is Rossar Sutherland.
Hi, I'm Rossar Sutherland. Um, live right off the square, um, for pretty much my whole life. Just wanted to, um, I've noticed here in the past couple of months, um, the old DFAX building on, um, Fairground Street, um, although when I went by the other day, it, it did look like it's been cleaned up pretty good, but, um, there were still some trash and some, uh, grocery carts and stuff. And, you know, we all talk about, you know, we try to find a solution for the homeless problem, but, um, at least in my experience, that just seems to be where a lot of them like to hang out. And then like when you go to Zaxby's or QT, for example, they're just kind of all over you once you get out of your car. I know the businesses in the area, most of them have, um, uh, no trespass orders, I believe with the Marietta Police, which, um, I don't know if they help or not, but, um, that might be something to look forward to in the county. I don't know if there's anything on the books with that. But then also, um, last week, you know, we, um, had, um, an illegal immigrant killing somebody, allegedly, uh, down on Pat Mel Road and allegedly somebody else from Trenday, Aragua, arrested off of 41. So with the All-Star Game coming into town and World Cup and stuff, you know, crime is naturally going to go up. I just want to make sure, you know, we, as a county, cities everywhere in Cobb, you know, we, we're just on our game and, you know, make sure these people, you know, whether they need to go to jail or be deported or whatever. I don't want to start the whole political debate, you know, just want to make sure we're all safe. But, um, and as I close out, I just, uh, this is the first time I ever spoke at a county meeting. I've gone to Marietta City Hall a lot, so, um, so it's good to speak to y'all. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donald Barth.
Good evening, ladies. I want to bring up something that's kind of important first. I've met a group of people out of, um, the Marietta First Baptist Church. They call themselves the Tuesday Morning Group. They volunteer to go out in the community and help people that need the help to clean up. I need you to be aware of these guys and ladies. I need you to locate them when you see a person, a senior citizen. I've had people in my neighborhood just got out of the hospital. I called on them to help bring the property up and then we'll worry about maintaining it after that. Now, that's the pleasantries out of the way. I want to use this word tonight, stipulation. Mostly y'all, y'all all got a college education. I think we understand what a stipulation is. It's a binding agreement. Recently, here we come out again at the end of scuffled grit and sandy plains. There is a stipulation that this property that is in the county can only, can be used for anything but a gas station. Now, if that's a stipulation, that's a legal document. That's, that's binding. I can't tell you how many times I sat up here, y'all went on Old Bell's Ferry Road. There was a stipulation that the property would not be used for anything except for it had to have a commercial type of thing. It's townhomes, ladies. What happened to the stipulation there? We talked about getting somebody to enforce. This was on y'all. Y'all put that stipulation in for them to take and annex the property. If you're giving away property in Marietta, you're, you're going against the grain. You're going against the people. We put y'all in there by voting for you to look out for our best interest. When you got a stipulation put in, you say, well, I want this. It's there for a reason. Comprehensive plans come together and we know what a comprehensive plan future lands use. We not paying that any attention. We've got to do better. And when I say we, I mean the four of you. So I'm going to ask you, that there's an annexation coming up for Marietta. Don't tell them no, tell them hell no. Tell them we want the stipulation that has been agreed upon to stay in place until we know what the residents in that area are being protected. You're in an area where part of the people are Cobb Canyons, part of the people are Marietta.
Mr. Barth.
Oh, Cobb County. Thank.
Christine Rosman.
Yes, and before Christine speaks, there are some limitations that are on the county when it comes to annexation requests that do not give us full autonomy to object to them with legal basis. And that's something that our Community Development Director can talk to you about following today's meeting. I would love for you two to connect. We share your pain at times when annexations occur and we have communicated certain interests with our citizens with respect to the property. And then property gets annexed and something different happens eventually with that property. And so, um, I think it would be helpful for you to be aware of what limitations are put on us due to state law. Yes. Mr. Rosman, please.
Hello, Chairwoman, Commissioners. Um, yeah, actually I know that area that he's talking about because, um, right now we're looking at, um, a couple hundred homes that are being, some that are complete, some that are going to be built. They totally wiped out an area at scuffled grit and sandy plains. And then City of Marietta is looking to put a gas station in, which the stipulations are, you know, it can't be within so many feet of homes. And, um, it is frustrating because Cobb County did its job and said to the builder of the big white wall, saying, hey, you got to take that wall down because it's not code. So then they just went to City of Marietta and City of Marietta is like, oh, great, come on here, we'll take your taxes. So anyway, it's, it is frustrating. And, um, also what's going to be frustrating too is like, cause there's, people run over, like almost, I've, I've seen so many people almost get hit right in front of, um, Whittaker Park and, cause there's the flashing light. But now when we're going to have like probably a couple hundred more cars, like maybe three, 400 more cars a day going there, because we have like at least 200 houses going over there. We're going to have to have more lights. So it's, it's really a mess. This is why people get angry about what's happening because this is when we say, we want to live in Cobb, we didn't want to live in Fulton or DeKalb or Gwinnett. And that's what we're looking like. And it's really, um, sad because we purchased our homes thinking, oh, this is, this is what we're going to expect and we can't. I would like to say too, if, and maybe I just need to do an open records request. I have no idea how much money that goes to, um, keep Cobb beautiful. But the last event that I went to when they had, um, chemicals, you know, like household chemicals you could do. Everybody and their brother got in their car because they're responsible, because they want to do the right thing. They got in their cars and it was at Jim Miller Park and at like noon or something, they're like, oh, we're not taking anymore. And there were like hundreds of cars. I haven't seen that happen again. I haven't seen keep Cobb beautiful do anything. So why are we, it sounds good, it sounds real kumbaya. It ain't doing anything. We're trying to get rid of things responsibly. So help us out on that. And also I think it would be nice if Sheriff Owens could come and speak here. Let us know what he's doing with Cobb County and with all of the illegals and ICE and if he's following 287G and how that's working out. Thank you.
JT Jackson.
Hello there, uh, JT Jackson. Uh, first off, thank you for allowing me this time to speak. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, express, I guess, a bit of disappointment. Uh, the pedestrian bridge between, uh, Cumberland Mall and the Cobb Galleria is shutting down just as baseball season's about to hit. I'm glad to hear that it's going to be back before the All-Star Game. Uh, but just wish the timing could have been a little better on that so we aren't shutting it down for the first part of our season. Speaking of bridges, I'm very excited for the bridge coming across Cobb Parkway. That's going to be a huge help getting to the other side, especially, uh, with that new Ellison apartment. A lot of folks moving in there. Uh, but I am a bit disappointed in the intersection between Wendy Ridge and Cobb Parkway. That intersection for, you know, a lot of folks down in Cumberland, uh, that's how we would get to the store. There's a Sprouts across the street and Aldi a little further down. And it's a little, it's, it's kind of scary trying to cross the seven plus lanes on Cobb Parkway, uh, just to get to the store. Uh, so excited for the bridge, but if we could do something at the ground level, uh, even just an assessment, that'd be great. And then one thing I wanted to point out, uh, just in my walk-in and, uh, in my trips around town, I've noticed that Route 10 and the Rapid 10 are often running side by side by the time they're getting to Cumberland, the last stop, uh, which kind of seems inefficient, that we have two buses running the same route, just, you know, tailing each other. So if there was something that we could do as far as looking at the spacing for those, uh, to make sure they aren't running side by side and we're, you know, getting as much people, or as efficiently running people down to Art Center or Atlantic Station as we can with those, uh, great services, just want to see them doing as well as they can. So thank you for the time today. Uh, really appreciate it. Uh, thank you.
Craig Harfoot.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Craig Harfoot. What Sam was talking about, you know, the, the roads and all that. I, I wanted to, I didn't get any response about why aren't we doing a lost as opposed to a sploshed. And, and it's, it could be changed right now. And the things he's talking about could be done with a lost just as well as a splosh. And then you got the Cumberland CID that has their money and that braves things all about them anyway. So the, the bigger issue is like right now, Lower Roswell Road is just tore all to pieces. And that, they, they, they started tearing up the parking lot of the Papa John's and the, the emergency dental place. They're still operating, but lost half their parking lot. And the tower poles are getting moved. Millions and millions of dollars spent just for a lane that you could have added some paint. And, um, and then it ties into what he says about, you, you make seven lanes of road and how do you cross it? Then you put a bridge up and how do you get a handicapped person up on that bridge? Then you're putting elevators on it. It really expensive and it's not good planning. And, and, um, and we're going into this, you know, housing, you know, I watched, uh, Cobb TV when they're talking about, oh, we think we're going to get a little bit of growth in our digest. But all the people that tore down houses that were 240, 300 and built million dollar ones, they can't sell them. They haven't sold them since two years ago. And they finally finished them because you can't keep one open forever, you know, but. But on a building permit. So, you know, things aren't going to go well. I mean, it's, and it goes to, history repeats itself. And we're at end of empire here in America. Whether you realize it or not, it is, our Congress, our, all the people in power have spent money, diverted some themselves. I mean, you can't live in Washington unless you're cheating on the stock market almost. And it's rampant. And it's like, okay, you got some empty buildings in Washington. Well, you got an empty DFAX building. What are you going to do with it? Well, in Washington, for, if you are a young person and get elected to the State House, how are you going to afford to live in Washington? You need a dormitory. And I mean, basically, the Senate and the House should be in dormitories right there on premises. And then they don't have to do insider trading. And the same is true locally.
Mr. Harfoot, your time's up. Chairwoman, let's last the speakers.
All right. Thank you, Bill. With that, we are now at our consent agenda. And those items have been scrolling on the screen prior to the meeting, and we'll do so afterwards. Commissioners, we do have one additional item to add to the agenda for consent. And it is to approve a transfer agreement between Cobb County and the Mableton Development Authority and associated resolution for the Series 2015 bonds for property sufficient to accommodate the proposed South Cobb Public Health Center on Riverside Parkway. Is there a motion to add that to the consent agenda?
Make a motion to add item number 43 to the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. With that, Commissioners, we do have some revisions that have been made to consent already to Agenda Items 19 and 33. 29 has been withdrawn. 30 has been withdrawn. Oh, and then Agenda Item 19 was just to add in the name of the contractor. And 33, I believe we just totaled up the amounts for the annual allotments for the CDBG grant funds. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? As, well, I'll share the motion. I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised and to authorize the execution of the necessary documents. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, that takes us to the regular portion of our meeting agenda. And our first tab will be under the Water System.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. The Water System recommends that the Board of Commissioners approve an increase to the Cobb County Water Systems wholesale wastewater rates to become effective May 1, 2025, and annual rate increases through January 1, 2029. The proposed rates are for the Water Systems Wholesale Treatment Services that we provide to the cities of Astell, Marietta, Smyrna, and portions of surrounding counties. So those entities collect wastewater from their direct customers, and then they send the wastewater to us to treat. So we charge them a rate for those treatment services. Our proposed rate increase represents a 3.5% increase, which is consistent with the rate increase that we did for our retail customers in December.
All right, Commissioners. I move that we approve this agenda item as it has been presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
That now takes us to the Transportation tab.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. DOT has four items for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Powder Springs in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for resurfacing on Carter Road, Resurfacing Contract 2025-3 Local Roads South, Project Number B 2918. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $446,432 for drainage system repairs on Spencer's Trace, Project Number B 22151. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of proposed grant applications to congressional delegation members for fiscal year 2026, congressionally directed spending funding requests for the following five projects: Dallas Highway at Lost Mountain Road-Marcel Road, South Cobb Transit Center, Old 41 Highway, Bell's Ferry Road Bridge over Noonday Creek, and Factory Schultz Pedestrian Bridge over Interstate 20.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. And our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize the sole source procurement of a five-year communication service plan from Transportation Control Systems in an amount not to exceed $156,960 for Advanced Transportation Management Systems 2025 School Flasher Communication, Project Number B 2514, and further authorize the corresponding budget transaction.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
That now takes us to the Support Service Agency tab. I believe we just have Property Management up.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. Property Management has two items this evening. Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve a purchase agreement with Max Air Mechanical Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $219,855 for the replacement of the HVAC rooftop unit, ductwork and controls at 3830 South Cobb Drive in Smyrna, Georgia, for the Cobb Treatment Courts. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Procurement Services Director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners authorize the replacement of the existing flooring in the amount not to exceed $66,495.20 by Southeast Commercial Flooring Incorporated at 3830 South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, for the Cobb Treatment Courts. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the execution of the purchase order through Procurement Services Department.
Commissioner Sheffield, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Andrew. That now takes us to our second public comment.
Susan Strevens.
Good evening. I just wanted to say I watched the work session this afternoon, and I had some questions that I'd like addressed about how the budget. Do you have a requirement for a balanced budget? Do you have, some questions were brought up about overlapping of services. Is there a process in place to make sure there isn't overlapping of services? And it looked like a lot of increase from last year's budget to this year's budget. But I didn't, we needed accounting of how you are saving money and not just spending the money. And we have seen with the federal government the amount of fraud and abuse that's gone on with the NGOs and such. And I'm curious as to, does that flow down? And is it in Cobb County as well? So thank you.
That's the last speaker of the public.
Thank you, Bill. That now takes us to our appointments tab. And we just have one matter, which is to announce the appointments to the Workforce Development Board of Iris Simmons, Danette Thornton, David Young, and Peta Parkinson. That concludes our BOC appointments tab. And we are now at the Commissioner's Public Address. And Commissioner Gamble can begin as soon as her slides are on the screen.
National Science Appreciation Day is celebrated tomorrow, March 26. It celebrates scientific achievements. Science has unleashed potential and transformed the quality of life thanks to all the workers in every field of science and medicine throughout the world. And lastly, Ramadan concludes on the evening of Sunday, March 30, with the celebration of Eid al-Fitr, which is the festival of breaking fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll now go on to Commissioner Burrow.
Help fulfill the vision of a Veterans Memorial Park in Cobb County. Join the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation tomorrow. A wine tasting charity from 5:00 to 7:00 at Marietta Wine Market just off the square, 18 Powder Springs Street. The event is open to the public. A $10 donation to participate in the wine tasting. And there will also be a raffle, $5 or five for $20. You can go to cobbveteransmemorial.com for more information. Get rid of your trash in the Powers Ferry corridor, 9:00 to 10:30 this Saturday, March 29, along Powers Ferry Road and Terrell Mill Road. Meet at 8:30 for coffee and refreshments in the Kroger parking lot at 1310 Powers Ferry Road. Supplies and safety equipment will be provided. Volunteers younger than 18 must be accompanied by an adult. You can sign up at powersferryca.com/index.html. Please join us for a long-awaited grand opening and tours and also a canine demonstration on April the 4th at 10:00 a.m. for the new Police Precinct 6, located at 3141 Hong Way, near mountain, right behind Mountain View Aquatic Center. This is a 2016 sploshed project, so we're very excited to see it finally come to fruition. Last Saturday, the Bell's Ferry Civic Association had their quarterly cleanup. They collected 35 bags of trash plus items like tires, car parts, and a sink were picked up on both sides of Bell's Ferry Road from the 575 Overpass to Parkwood Drive and Chastain Lakes Dam. To get involved, you can contact bellsferrycivic.org. We rock. Last Friday, we celebrated all the women elected officials of Cobb County. We had judges, we had commissioners, all four of us. And it was a great celebration. It was something I started my first year in office. And since COVID, we've kind of slacked off and haven't celebrated. But it was a great turnout. The county manager and the county clerk joined us. And we shared a lot of stories and good times. And also, Friday night, I attended the awards banquet for Cobb County Fire. 25, there are 25 years of celebrating. Also, our new fire chief, who is here with us tonight, was sworn in. So congratulations to you and all the award winners. It's a great event, and I'm excited I could be in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. We are now at Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I'm actually going to serve, share a video.
Hello, everyone. I am Commissioner Sheffield, and I am personally inviting you to my fourth annual district-wide cleanup. I am super excited, as I am every year, about the cleanup. And we have with us Kimberly, who's going to share a little bit more about the event.
I am so excited to be partnering again this year with Commissioner Sheffield and doing the District 4 Earth Day cleanup and kickoff. This year, we have partnerships with community members such as Kennesaw State University. They'll be sending out students to help us, along with Keep America Beautiful and Keep Georgia Beautiful, as we celebrate and help get our nation cleaned up towards America 250th.
The impetus behind our district-wide cleanup is to bring awareness to the litter challenges that we face in District 4. I have been so encouraged over the last three years by so many residents and business owners to come out and lend a hand. It is extremely, an extremely important issue to me. Not only does it bring awareness to our community, and it provides a lot of community pride, but it also helps bring awareness leading up to Earth Day. As many of you all know, it promotes health and wellness, which is extremely important to me. And it also protects our ecosystem by keeping litter out of our streams. So we hope to see you on the 29th. The meetup location will be at Walmart, located at 1133 East West Connector in Astell and Boyd Road. So we're really excited about that. We're going to have lunch. We're going to have breakfast. We're going to have a DJ to get us warmed up. And we need for you to register. We have a lot of volunteers, but we would love for you to register. Register by clicking on the link in my newsletter. And we hope to see you on the 29th, and we can tackle litter together.
That was great.
It took a million takes to do that.
It was done very well.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. There were some remarks shared and public comment. And I did want to share that there is going to be recycling pop-up and drop-offs throughout the county between April and July of this year. And various dates and locations will be shared on the Keep Cobb Beautiful website and encourage you to check that out. And we also have a community recycling event beyond what was shared here today on April 12, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Jim Miller Park off of Callaway Road. And there you can bring items for paper shredding. You can also drop off electronics, metals, textiles for recycling, and bring any items that are part of the hefty, renew, hard-to-recycle program. And I'm looking here. There's also going to be a number of cleanup events between April 1st and June 21st in respect to April being the Great American Cleanup Month. And there will be a medication disposal event on April 26. For those of you who would like to safely dispose of your medications, you can bring them to, I have 12380 Cobb Parkway. Do you know what building that is? I'll have to get a slide for that at the next meeting.
It's probably the precinct one.
Maybe precinct one is not listed here.
For medical disposal.
Yeah. Okay, that'll be our Police Precinct 1. You can bring prescription meds, over-the-counter meds, liquids and pills, ointments and creams. So with that, thank you all for tuning in today. We appreciate your participation in our Board of Commissioners meeting. Again, we thank you for your patience and understanding with us as we work through our networking issues. And we hope that you will join us for our next Board of Commissioners meeting coming up in May. Have a safe evening. Thank you.